I'd like to call to order Monday, June 3rd, 2024, City Council Meeting at 7:06. If you rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Hi, United States of America. To the Republican Party, which stands nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call. We are all here today in person. Been a while. I hope you had a chance to look at the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
The move.
By Counselor Bailey, any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago to approve tonight's agenda. Written, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, public comments? Do you have any? Okay, we got public comment placed on the agenda where public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of public addressing council requested to give their name and city of residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers are to limit their testimony five minutes as we're limited 30 minutes total, and I'm gonna put you on a strict timer.
I am gonna be so brief, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Betsy Johnson. I am here tonight under the public comment. I live in Warren, actually, but have, my husband has a business in Scappus. He had a little incident out at the airport the other day, and your police department responded so professionally and so courteously. And at a time when people have plenty of bad things to say about the police, I wanted to come down tonight and thank the Scappus Police for their incredible professionalism. The issue resolved itself. It's, the resolution is in process right now. But the Scappus Police were absolutely seminal in getting things started in the right direction. It will resolve well. And I just wanted to use this public occasion in front of the council to say thank you.
Cool. Pass it on, Lieutenant, like the day you mentioned it, and thank Burglin and Barnes directly, I think, as well. So really appreciate it.
It was exceedingly helpful, and they were certainly professional. So thank you very much.
Thank you. BP's. Okay, public comment is now done. We were on to the consent agenda. Today, we're looking at May 20, 2024, City Council Work Session Minutes. May 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes, May 23, 2024, Special City Council Meeting Minutes. Contract Authorization, Maple Street and Commerce Drive Sidewalk Infill Resolution Number 24-04. Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Scappus and the City of St. Helens. And a Resolution 2406, a resolution declaring police department surplus property. The discussion before I entertain a motion. The motion to accept tonight's best agenda. Counselor Santiago, moves, any seconds?
Second.
By Counselor Bailey, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Question carries. You for that. On to new business, number two, electric supply update. Got Columbia River PUD General Manager Michael Sykes, and we got Brandon Staley as well on up. You found a lot of power or something? Always gotta come with good news.
Absolutely. First of all, I got a letter. I guess the first thing I wanted to say is, the last time we were here, I, we really appreciated the dialogue we had with the council. And depth of the discussion we had about power and power supply. And one thing that we've learned is that Columbia River is not the only area that has a challenge. This is, we met with folks from Forest Grove, we met with folks from McMinnville, and they have the same issue. They don't even have enough power for any companies to come in their doors. So it's really a region-wide issue, and so that's the last time we met with, it seems like a long time ago, but we really spent a lot of time and energy working with Bonneville and their staff, try and determine what, what we can do about our particular issue. One of the things that, that we, we did about, about three weeks ago is we met with Bonneville's transmission planners for the second time. There was about seven or eight of them. We met with them in Vancouver with PGE and with Clascanine and McMinnville. And purpose of the meeting was to talk about constraints that the whole, whole region is sharing. We also had a meeting with the folks from Bonneville to talk about our, our deep dive at the, every year, Bonneville asks us for our load projections, and last year, Brandon submitted 100 megawatt projection, and that was based on the Armstrong project moving forward. And so that really kind of began, it really put Bonneville to the task to what's called a deep dive. And basically, they look at our system and try to give us a sense of what, what improvements are gonna be necessary if they can serve that load, or what, what do they have to do to upgrade our system? And anyway, we, we had that meeting with him, Brandon, what was that, about a month ago? And anyway, they had some recommendations that are preliminary, and we thought it was important to share those with you. And I'll just go ahead, you wanna go ahead and talk a little bit about that?
Ask one question. Was the 100 megawatts, like, total or addition to what you already have?
Addition to what we already have. So we asked BPA to kind of do a deep dive of what it would look like and what it would take to add load in our service territory. And so skip to the good part, I suppose, not necessarily great, but good. They came back with that we could extract an additional 100 megawatts in our service territory with a 26-mile line upgrade that already has existing right-of-way. So that's kind of the good news out of the deep dive that was performed. And one caveat to that, of course, being an engineer and got through a caveat out there, is that's a local look at our service territory. There could be some other constraints outside of that to get that 100 megawatts. But that gave us some direction to kind of head with, and so with that information, we were then able to kind of articulate some of an ask, and that's kind of what is in that letter of what was a joint effort with Michael and some of our staff to put it together and kind of get that in front of the BPA Administrator to kind of see what issues that having a constraint transmission system brings to our service territory and kind of what it means to everyone here.
Does the 100 include the 35 watt megawatts we already have available, or just total, it adds 65?
Yeah, that, that add would add an additional, right, roughly understand about 35 megawatts, so that would add 130.
Are your studies still being done then for Mer Center and the one in Rainier?
Yeah, and so that deep dive study that was done was, there was nothing to hold any kind of a weight to it or a dollar figure or a timeline. It was kind of like a back of the napkin. Hey, here's kind of what we can do quickly, so you can kind of understand some of your limitations and what are some of the possible solutions to move forward with some capacity. And so that's where the study that we're still doing for out here in Scappus will be important to kind of get a, a look at this particular location. And, you know, what I'm expecting is to see some of that result of that deep dive in that result for this area, that same kind of a solution.
But just kind of backing up a little bit, I really think that, you know, the one, it depends how you look at it, but the fact that the solar company didn't locate in the St. Helens area on the Boise property served by PGE basically means that we still have 35, 40 megawatts of power, which is a good thing for the industrial area around Scappus and also the industrial areas in the St. Helens area. And in the meantime, Armstrong's moving forward with their plans for that particular facility. They're, they've got a, they went through the LLIR process, and Bonneville announced that they would be able to serve them at 9.9 megawatts of power. And also, there's the old, the old Bonneville, or the old Boise mill site that Cascade owned. It looks like somebody's gonna buy that and re, restart that, which is good news for St. Helens. But even after both of those are spoken for, we still have a fairly, you know, we have 25 or so megawatts of power that is potentially available. So, but in the meantime, we don't want to sit on our hands. One of the things that we're seeing happen all over, not just the Northwest, but the country, is in a lot of data centers that are locating, and they consume significant amounts of power. There's probably five or six different data centers looking to locate up in the Umatilla area, I'm told. And, and so they're out there in the market trying to find power just like everybody else is, and they're competing with Bonneville for that, so.
They're probably not having, hiring a lot of people.
Yeah.
River Farms are probably.
Well, usually about 15 to 20, but they, they pay, you know, the electric company gets, does really well, but the community gets some in lieu of, but, you know, I think it's really, you know, does create the jobs I think we're all hoping to see.
So you, we had about 35, the Boise would take about 10 than Armstrong.
Eight to 10.
And so that would be left, just the heads, Cascade Tissues was about a one and a half. So, I mean, we still have the ability to do several, 10, one and a half Cascade Tissues in Scappus, and probably still have power for smaller power users that still employ 100 people or more.
Well, one of the, one of the, no, it seemed like the deep dive we got from the preliminary Bonneville slash PGE look at, at our area, it, it might be that there might be as much as 50 megawatts, so there might be more power. The other thing that was really interesting is they, they recognized that in order for us to improve our system, we have to tie to the South Alston line up, which is up in Rainier. And the fact that it's along an existing right-of-way is a big deal, because that's where, where a lot of transmission projects don't get built is because of the NEPA laws and the timeframes it takes to reconstruct that. And if you have an existing right-of-way, it's a leg up. And, and, you know, it's our hope that we can continue to move that through the Bonneville process. The, the good news is that the Bonneville Transmission Staff knows Columbia County, they know where Scappus-St. Helens is. They didn't know that before. They have 15,000 miles of transmission line that they're responsible for. You know, we got about 30 of those, so to be able to bring them out here, show them our area, show them the potential, they were, they were really, really impressed by the potential here, and so we're, we're real hopeful that we can have them add our project to their, to their list.
Will you keep us surprised, or what can cities do? What can we do to help? I mean, what do we need to look for? Is there potential land purchases? Is there, is there things that we can do to help as well?
Well, I think the fact that the city stepped up and, and, and joined in with us to, with Project Sprint to move forward to LLIR on behalf of that project was significant, that really was critical, and it helps us get that project in the, in the queue. As far as in the future, I sent you, I showed you a letter that we sent to John Hairston. And we think that the next step is for us to take a letter similar to this and send it to each one of our, our US Senators in our Congress. Really, our whole congressional delegation, because this is, this is, Bonneville's a federal organization and political pressure. Getting calls from Ron Wyden, and we're hoping that that can help push, you know, make sure that, that John Hairston and the Bonneville folks recognize how, how critical it is to help us upgrade this transmission line in a timely fashion. What we, what we said in this letter is that we had 2,400 jobs that we're looking at South Columbia County that didn't materialize because we didn't have capacity. So we're gonna keep telling that story, and I've reached out to Paul Vogel, and he's gonna help us prepare that letter and and that we're gonna send our delegation, and we, we think that we, it would be great if we could get cities and the port and, and CET and, and Betsy and, and, and other leaders from this area to sign that letter and, and send it in, because I think it shows that we're united, that this is a big deal, that we're all on the same page, wanting to try and resolve, so.
Yeah, every time I see Merton here, I'll meet you, I definitely bring this up.
Just, I mean, I understand water lines and sewer lines and roads. I have no concept of what it costs for electrical. If you ran, you had to run a line 26 miles, and if you did that, you could get another 100 megawatts? If that's the case, what, what is that? I have no concept of the cost.
You could probably ballpark that project around somewhere between 50 to 60 million dollars, back of the napkin ballpark pricing.
For 56 million dollars, we gain another 100 megawatts. Just, just for the concept.
I mean, it's a back of the napkin number. Don't quote me on that.
Two million a mile.
Well, that's the thing that's important. You know, we have this preliminary deep dive, but does give us numbers, and that's really gonna be critical, and we hope to have that by August. So, and that's gonna tell us how much that we, we need to try and pursue, and in the meantime, we need to build our relationships and our.
Mr. Vogel, what do you have to offer tonight?
Well, a, a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. I, I probably should wait till Michael and Brandon are done. Unless they are.
I, I've got one more. Like, if you're thinking of things that you can do, you know, if you ever see like legislation that looks at like permitting reform or things that look for citing, you know, generation local, like if nuclear ever comes up. Those kinds of things that are to support generation, you know, where load is, would be a huge benefit to, I think, the region and the country. You know, those things were supported on a general scale.
Here, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I, I wanted to thank Michael and his board and Brandon for, you know, the work and the leadership around this issue. This isn't just a CR PUD issue. This is an issue for all the utilities that serve our county and, and in our region. But the PUD has really aggressively moved forward, having filed three studies, really, in addition to the Armstrong request. And that, that, that sort of action and, and putting, putting money where your mouth is, is, is what gets the attention of Bonneville Power and all the transmission authorities in the Northwest. And somebody had to do that, and, and the PUD has done it. Under the heading of Things That Can Be Done, Mike has sent a letter to BPA Administrator Hairston. As, as he mentioned, I, I would like to ask the council to consider sending a companion letter to the one that, that Mike sent. We're, CET is gonna do that, and we're also gonna work with the PUD on, on a letter to the delegation. There is no substitute for multiple channels and multiple appeals and multiple perspectives to the Bonneville Power Administration. They're a federal agency. They are responsive to pressure, and they're also responsive to the relationship building that Mike and his staff are doing through this transmission look. So that would be one, one thing. You've already done another thing, and that is critical, and that is join together with the PUD on the Project Spice LLIR. That was a significant statement to the property owners who's, who've spent tens of millions of dollars preparing that site. It's a huge statement to Project Spice, which is, which is a project that we are now in the finals for. We're one of three sites they're looking at in Oregon. We're very confident that we are the best site in Oregon. And we expect to position very well in an upcoming, upcoming site visit. Simply the ability to say that that request has already gone in and that the Columbia Commerce Center is in the power queue is, you can't, you cannot overstate what an important statement that is to both the, both the customer and the landowners. We've got another project in St. Helens, as, as Mike alluded to. It's, it's the restart and repurposing of the St. Helens Mill. With the startup power for Project Spice, startup power for that project and Restor Cap, we're still under capacity, but this is still a massive problem, a problem for us to solve. And the PUD is leading the way in getting the engineering and the electron information that we need, need to do that. So I would encourage the City Council to consider sending a letter, doing a memorial, whatever, whatever the City Council considers its strongest statement in support of not only the PUD, but resolution of these issues with Clascanine PUD and other BPA customers in the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Yes, you are. I, I'm not sure, excuse me, I didn't mean to, I'm not sure the council's aware. The Urbanial District joined with the CEPD on a $50,000 study for this. We went half and half. And so when you're talking about the LLIR for that Spice project, that's where that came from.
It's some in the queue, which we found out from Project Sprint, when you get in the queue, you get kind of first right of refusal. If you're not in that queue, if someone comes in, they could take the power from you. So this study will help find, get the power here, and it puts them up in front, so should not be jumped. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I stuck around to just again, thank the PUD and the city. Everything's been said, it just hasn't been said by everybody, so I won't repeat it, but Paul summarized it perfectly. Your level of cooperation with PUD positions us brilliantly to do a major recruitment that I think could particularly impact the economy of this area and, and bring vision to the Innovation District as anchored by all that.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Allocation of CEP funds. I don't think Isaac is around. He's the one doing this. Hey, I'll do it real quick. As you can see, we had exhibit, through his spreadsheet, it allowed people to get more than the max at first. And so she made a few adjustments, so nobody got more than they asked for, and I think by adjusting it, it moved $210 each one more than the original. So I, the only thing it said on here, he had asked about, what can we do next year? I might look at a way of maybe I go last to see that we don't go over. If someone wants 1,000, make sure they don't have 1,200. And then I can move that 200 somewhere else, so that way, we were able to fund quite a few of these. Went on the list, or got something, and we were able to give $40,804. And so just looking for a motion to approve those allocate funds through the 2024 CEP grant cycle, as shown.
Just a question. So there's an update to Exhibit B, is that correct? I didn't get that one.
Exhibit B revised.
I didn't get the revised. Thank you. All right.
Not coming in the book. So, I mean, there was a couple that were like, say, asked for 1,000, they got 1,200, or asked for 1,500 and got 17. So we just put everybody that got over their, their requests, we gave them their requests, and it moved about $200 to the ones that don't. So all those got money, already received a thank you from one or two of those. I think it was really good that we were able to give that many people money. And if you have any recommendations for next year, going forward, let Isaac know. You're added to the, he did put a spreadsheet, which was nice. That way we can kind of see, but I had a little trouble accessing it at times.
And if I just mentioned, Isaac's mother-in-law passed away, and that's why he's not here.
Um, so I, I moved council allocate to any 24 CEP grant cycle funds shown in Exhibit B revised.
Any seconds?
A second.
Counselor Holmes, any discussion? None. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Question carries. Thank you, Isaac, for that. On to number four, contract authorization. We got wastewater treatment, plant phase one. Works Director Dave Sukow and Administrator Charlotte Baker.
Mayor and council, good evening. I'm gonna let Charlotte take it here in a minute, but just for some context, I'll give you guys a little history, because this project's been going on for a very long time, and this is a milestone tonight for us. We're very excited for it. So I started seven and a half years ago. The, the plant was in dismay then, and it's been in the works of all the master planning and everything to get to the stage we are. Recognizing all of the issues that the plant had, had surprise issues, the erosion basin failure was something that we didn't anticipate, and it was probably the biggest expense to this new project. So this has been in the works, as I said, many years, engineering, we're at pushing three years, just trying to get through that. There's so much level of detail in this. This project is the biggest that we've taken on over 20 years, so there's obviously some magnitude to it, but it's said and done. It'll be well in excess of 20 million. With included at the dryer and everything, we're at 20 now. It's gonna be at about 2 million in engineering when it's said and done. So just so everybody understands, we, we've been working hard for a long time to get to this stage, and there's probably been three generations of council who have been hearing about this, and so you guys are actually in a really great time to see it come to fruition over the next year, year and a half, so. With that, I will let Charlotte for her staff report.
Um, so I'm not gonna read everything right forward, since you already have it in front of you, but I just wanted to sort of emphasize that the importance of this project continued through to the bidding phase. We tried really hard, along with our engineer from Consor, to get as many solid bids as possible. So we left the bid open for much longer than typical. The bid opened or was advertised on April 16th, and it closed on May 23rd. We gave people credit a long time. There was a mandatory pre-bid meeting on April 30th. We had about, well, I don't know how many individuals, but folks from about 10 different companies came to that. We only accepted bids from individuals who attended that ma, that meeting. It was a mandatory meeting. So on May 23rd, myself and Austin, our, our contract engineer from Consor opened the bids. We received three bids. The bids were from JW Fowler with a bid of $19,616,951. RNG Excavating with a bid of $17,377,600, and McLaren Sons with a bid of $16,384,397. Bids are significantly higher than, than what our engineers had estimated, and we, we did publish that engineer's estimate, and we received a couple of questions about it, and we had advised bidders that that was our estimate. That said, the project is of vital importance, and we also have received funding for this project through ARPA, and as you know, those funds need to be spent or we lose them, and some of the deadlines for parts of the project are coming up pretty quickly. So we feel that all city staff and Consor both agree that moving forward with McLaren Sons is the way to go. That being said, we have been speaking with, or with McLaren Sons, excuse me, today. Actually, we've met with them for the first time, and they are very amenable to doing some value engineering, potentially removing parts of the project that aren't completely necessary to bring the price down. So the contract price is negotiable, but it will not exceed the $16,384,397 that they bid. I just wanna make that clear, that that's sort of potentially a moving target, and hopefully quite a bit lower, although we won't know until we get further on the process with them. Um, so staff recommends that council authorize city manager Lehman to enter the city into a contract with McLaurin Sons. To complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements project.
Thank you. Uh, where are they located headquartered? Are they Oregon based?
Tinwood, Washington.
That's right. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Charlotte, is there any issue under your suggested motion if we include in there not to exceed 16,384 and 397?
I don't think so, no.
Concerns? Okay. Just want to, um.
Just, just know that it could, but will come before you if something does have to go above that, if there's a substantial.
Yeah.
Although at this time, we're not anticipating that. Um, in the negotiations today, things that we talked about. Were steel expenses. We're looking at options to use plastics instead of steels for grates. Um, doing away with some of the catwalks that our operators would walk on and things like that, just some different saving measures that they recommended. So. I don't anticipate that to. That more than the 384. I still think we're going to hit the 16 million mark, maybe just north of that, but. Anything that we can do, we're going to do to, to cut it down and still keep the operational.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your staff report. Uh, just want to follow up on. Um, the topics where you said there's some engineering, value engineering that you're working through. Sounds like some things can be cut out or redesigned. Or cost savings. How's that going to impact safety though? When we talk about moving from using steel to plastic. Talk about like longevity of how long will these parts last? Is, is there a significant difference when you start doing these trade-offs? So I'm just curious, kind of overall, is it in our best interest to spend the money that we need to spend? Is, are we going to run into issues later down the road because we made certain trade-offs?
So those ideas were proposed to us just today, this afternoon. Um, we actually have an internal meeting tomorrow. Our engineer to start diving into those recommendations, see how feasible they are. Resin, you know, grates and things are very feasible. The, the life expectancy of those resins is 50 years. So it is going to get us through the life of the project. If it doesn't make sense, we're not going to pursue it. Like I said, we're, we're at the early stages to just see what we can do to save the city as much money and still give a good product. The, the loan for this is going to likely be a 30-year term. We definitely want the infrastructure to outlast the, the debt.
Sure.
So, so we're definitely looking at this very realistic. Safety will never be sacrificed topic. Uh, like I said, the, the walkways that we're looking at would just be not something that puts the operator in harm's way, but maybe a spot they didn't. To be, so that's what we're going to look at operationally tomorrow. We're going to get the plans out in front of us and say. A person stands here, can they still perform their duties or not? So those are options we're exploring, but not anything set in stone at this point.
Thank you.
You had ARPA dollars have been used or will be used as well.
Actually.
Yeah, there's a couple of million dollars towards this particular side of it on phase eight, which is the wastewater plant itself for the headworks and grit, if any of you remember that term. Um, also component B of this is the dryer. So this contractor will be doing the dryer installation as well for us. We know we have a deadline on that. The material is the last of them at New York today. They'll be working their way across the United States this week, and so we'll have everything in hand hopefully by late next week or early of the following. Um, and then the dryer is to be operational by December of this year, which we don't. Wait it not to be.
The big portion, it's there. So if you want to go see it, the bio cell.
Say, is it out of the box yet or?
It is not out of the box. We'll be waiting for it. It was impressive though.
Big box.
Box to play in. Um, and then the loan, you got a really good interest rate on a loan. And, um, so no problem with financing.
Yeah, and we will be coming to you with loan details. Um, the expansion to the loan, the city took on the 6.34 million, I think it was several years ago. We're obviously going to have to expand on that. All of that has to be council approval of our resolution. Be coming to you with that information within the next month or less. Move that forward. We're working with DEQ right now to get all of that paperwork in place for that. So.
But the interest rate, uh, does remain the same.
And preliminarily, I, and again, we got to work all this out, but the interest rate appears to be, uh, 2.38.
Yeah. It's a, yeah, 1.88 interest rate, and then there's a 0.5% um, fee to pay to the DEQ.
Get it automatically deducted out of your checking account? Do you get a little bit off?
I wish.
E-filing, all of that good stuff.
Typically, this is paid with, uh, your wastewater bill. I mean, your, eat your bill.
Yes. Yes, the city, the city put a rate structure in place a couple of years ago. Um, to, to bring the rates up to be able to make that payment. We'll be doing some reevaluations currently are to make sure that those rates are still going to meet the mark, but we anticipate it will.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Mission, anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize city manager Lehman to enter, uh, the city into contract with McClure and Sons. To complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements project up to a maximum of 16,384,397 dollars.
You have a motion, Mike. For Bailey, any second?
I second for the sake of com- or, uh, discussion.
President Miller has a motion to move the council authorized city manager Lehman to enter the city into a contract with McLaurin Sons. To complete the wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements projects up to the maximum 16,384,397.
I, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to clarify that the contract we believe for sure will be executed before. The end of Mr. Lehman's term, or do we need to make that broad to city manager?
No, it should be in place within the next four weeks or we're never going to make our milestones. Dryer. So it.
Okay.
We hope to have these negotiations done within the next week with them to lock in that price.
Discussion. Any, none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Carries?
I would like to mention, I keep telling you that I've been a city manager for 34 years. Think this is the largest contract I've ever signed.
So I sign the largest check I've ever signed. Salt's dryer or something. I don't remember what.
Was it your money?
It's, it's different experience.
It was easier to sign.
Yeah. Um, okay. Now, next up, we have a resolution 24 dash 05, a resolution amending resolution number 21 dash 13. Uh, Public Works Director Dave Sukow again.
Yeah. So as you mentioned, we're looking to propose this resolution to you as an amendment to our rate structure. Um, in 2021, we did a deep dive evaluation between staff and council to the water rates to make them, um. Or equitable for the users. Way that the city had been prior to that, doing it is they hadn't touched the commodity rate for many, many, many years and been raising the base fee. And in evaluating that, what that did is it actually put the burden on low water users. Because those costs weren't coming up with use, it was only on base charge. Whereas if you equate your rates to users, it allows you to keep your base rate down so that your minimum bill would be as low as feasibly possible. Um, in doing that, we were able to come up with a good rate structure, but what was either overlooked or just not addressed at the time was, is that we didn't align. Commodity rates with that current base increase. And we do this across the board as far as with wastewater and stuff, but it didn't make it into this resolution. That's why we're proposing it. Um, what this will do by making this adjustment is we'll bring those rates up equally across the board. So is it a few years from now, we're not coming back and starting to punish people again by having to increase that base fee so much to meet demands? Everything will be proportionate. So it doesn't equate to a lot, and I'm sure that's what's on all of your mind is the users, but.
Give an example?
Yeah, you're talking about a penny per hundred gallons in the current rate increase. So for the average user, that's going to equate to about a 30 cent increase on their water bill. This proposed.
I'm going to look up my bill now, but you know, off the top of your head, the base rate.
That's like 38.25 or something. Then it's 38 cents up to 50 cents. A tier of use. It's up to 3,000 gallons for your first tier. It breaks up from that.
An average home would go up 30 cents. Month?
30 cents a month. Yeah. But it does, it does add up for us as a whole, because it, when you look at. Commercial users and everybody equally, it equates to about 20% of our revenue. So it's not marginal to ignore. It, it needs to be addressed. It, it does add up to something. But if you bring them up evenly, then we're not a few years from now having the discussion of trying to re, to catch it back up. It's going to come up.
The base rate is.
Hope that makes sense.
Now, the base rate is still going up.
Correct.
Does every year, can go every year. And I looked up, a lot of cities are all, are all up and they're all doing this. Um, but now this is just adding on to the usage charge to a little bit of an increase. And instead of raising it on everybody, or you're just adding that use charge. So if you don't want to hit minimum, if you don't use water. Of a certain level. Is there a, is there, the base charge, is that a certain amount that cover a certain amount of gallons? That just.
That's, that's your base fee and then, then you pay that.
Matter what you, you pay based on some use.
Yeah. Um, as I said, this, this is how we're structured in, in our wastewater. It just. Didn't make it into that resolution back in the day for whatever reason, and I don't recall. That was three years ago. So. Um, but in going through building the rates that'll be proposed to you at the next meeting, dawned on me that.
So, um, Dave, can, so councillor Miller was kind enough to link all the. Sessions over the last like four years about this topic and thank you for that. Um, and I went back and listened to all of them. Uh. There's one thing that I'm in. Trying to look at this holistically, so not just, we're going to look at this tonight and then we're going to look at something two weeks from now. Like I, I want like a more holistic picture in terms of costs. Um, are we currently in the middle of. A price increase for our water structure, whether that's waste. Like it's a, it's a tiered scaled percentage over the next, it's like, we're in the middle of it, of like five years.
For wastewater, not for water.
Okay.
So wastewater.
But it's all in one bill that we get.
It is, it is in one bill, but there's, there's multiple fees. You've got the water portion, the wastewater portion, the stormwater portion. It's all come at it as a whole. Yes. So, but structuring is different. Stormwater and the water are based on that 20 city average ECI. So that's variable every year. This year it's going to be a 2.7% increase. Um, wastewater is locked for this year and two more years at the 7% increase to cover the loan.
So we're on that tiered schedule right now for the wastewater and our base incre- and. We're going to increase the base for the wastewater as well. And increase. The base of the water and increase stormwater.
Correct.
Not the, uh, the 7% for the wastewater, does that not include? That's, that's a total increase for wastewater or?
It's, it, the 7% applies to the base and the commodity.
Correct, but it's not. No index up to that either. There's a flat 7% to that.
Flat 7% for the total.
So then what it, thank you. So then what's the plan? Just. So for the next five years, around this 7% increase for wastewater. But every year, the base will increase. We have a resolution to increase the base. So will there be another resolution to address the usage as well?
Commodity portion?
Yes, sorry, the commodity portion.
So that one was all encompassing. That one had the language that we're requesting on this that addresses base and commodity equal.
It's just for that period of time. So when we're done with that five-year step increase, you're going to come back and we're going to have another, or we?
By default, it will go back to the 20 city average indexing, just like everything else. Unless for some reason with the loan and things that we, if we can't beat the mark with that indexing, we'll have to have another discussion.
Okay.
If we can, all it's going to do is it's going to drop from seven to the same rate increase that all the other funds.
Okay.
And we went to seven to pay the loan?
Correct.
So how much are we looking at holistically with this and what's coming next week? How much of an increase? Are, are?
Well, I've never sat down and actually broke that out, but you're 2.7%, so. $38, um, for your base, if you do that by the 2.7%.
Yep. It's actually 35.52.
Okay. So, yeah, just take, take your stormwater fee by that.
Yep.
Then your water by that at the 2.7%, do the 7% on the wastewater. I have, I'm sorry, I didn't know these questions were coming. I would have been prepared, but that's what you're looking at. So. You total, you're probably looking at somewhere around a $10 increase combined across the funds.
Yeah. So my request, just moving forward, is the next time when we start to have these types of conversations about rate increases. If you can come and show us more holistically of what we're looking at versus doing piecemeal. Cause ultimately we're, we have to answer to individuals that approach us. I've already been approached by several residents, saw the notice in the newsletter and was like waving their. Waving it at me saying, what's going on? I was like, oh, okay. So it would just be helpful for it to be sort of more holistically presented. And so we understand exactly what the total cost is because today we're saying it's two, you know, it's going to be. Be 30 cents is what we're looking at, but then the next session we come to, now we're looking more at dollars. So that, that's all I'm asking is just moving forward, just so we know how much. Of an increase we're looking at, because my understanding is we can negotiate it a bit, correct?
Next packet is going to have a whole lot of information that looks like this. This is the city's fee structure. You will have that whole story when you get the next month, next week. Just wasn't really relevant to tonight's discussions, really only addressing one thing.
Hmm.
Um, but the whole picture based on users, how they use their water or.
And how much.
All of that information is published. Uh, a user can calculate best guesses for their bills. But that information is part of the next meeting.
Got it.
Presentation.
Can we put that in the newsletter as well? I mean, it's just like we talked about where our tax dollars, it'd be nice to educate them too. So they can see the whole amount that they're paying and where it's all coming from and how it's all calculated.
Like, yeah, and I think we need to tell the story. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I have a comment. Dave, I just want to clarify, uh, make sure that I understood you correctly earlier, that the rate increase is largely based on being able to pay the loan that we're going to be asking for, for the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct.
Okay. So I think there's a story to be told there also that these are. Essential, uh, capital improvement projects that we have to fund somehow. And we're trying to do.
Yeah, and we did. I mean, it's unfortunate for most of you because this stuff was, these wheels were set in motion many years ago. And we don't always have those opportunities to come back and, and do a refresh, which is why, like in those tours that I do with all of you as you onboard. We can touch on as much of that information then to get you up to speed on how we got to where we are. Um, and that is why the information is on our website. So if anybody has questions, they're more than welcome to go through those agendas and find it. It's not always easy. The information that I think you recently saw. A fair amount of work to dig all that up, but it does exist. We're, we're definitely transparent. But there's only a limited amount of opportunities to get that information back out in front of the public over and over and over. So that's why paying attention to the next meeting's packet, when we do this every year is critical. That's, that's where your information.
It, it is a hard, sorry, Larry. Um, it is a hard message to repeatedly tell. It's like the swimming pool fund. I mean, we have talked about that over and over and over again, but we still get the same acquisition, or excuse me. Um, we still get challenged on it all the time, um, on social media.
So. At the baseball game the other night, from my resident for many, many years asking about.
And it is handy to be able to have those resources posted online. So we can just link to it and be like, no, here's the correct information right here. So if we can build the story and have it linkable so that we can refer people to the information too, that would be very helpful.
Mayor. Yeah, uh, you are, uh, two things. Uh, first of all, when you get the next budget a year from now, the swimming pool fund will not be in there. We've taken care of that. Uh, the only thing now that the council has approved to date would be the, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave. Oh, you've approved the increase in the rates according to an inflationary index with other cities, that's been approved. The only other thing approved is two more years at seven percent. Any other creases, increases other than that, have to come back to you.
Yeah, or, or like I said, or by default, they will just go back to the indexing, as to the rates will.
Good record, is it seven percent per year, seven percent within the two years?
Per year, for two years.
I just am grateful, after hearing Klaske and I, every time I see them on the problems and the wastewater, all the issues that they're going through, we don't have that issue, and can't find the funds, and just looking for more money, I just-
Just speaking the obvious, I know you've all done the math in your head, but it was a thirty-five percent increase over the five years they were doing, to get us up to the mark where we needed to be to pay the loan. There was a lot of evaluation against comps of other cities of our size, it fell within that, so that is the made that approval comfortable with that choice at the time. So again, you guys are at a little bit of a disadvantage, because there's a lot of history that's moving on to get to the mark. You guys have to play catch-up to understand as you make your decision.
Yeah, I want to just reiterate something that you said for the record, and that is, that even with the thirty-five percent increase, we were still, I think, not even at the max of what the comparable comps were for other cities.
Yeah, if you go back through the PowerPoints that I think you shared, you'll see in that PowerPoint, it shows where we are versus other cities of our size, and we're still well below the mark. By no means the highest rates around.
The percentages just scare you, so, and put that into, should we put that into clear context?
Okay, so, any more discussion, I'm looking for a suggested motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that Council adopt Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero five, a resolution amending Number twenty-one dash thirteen.
Sir Holmes makes a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero five, a resolution amending Number twenty-one dash zero thirteen, any second. Council of Friends, any more discussion? For your so far, uh, seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
O's? Harry?
And if I could make, uh, one more comment, and now this is definitely for the future. Now, you, when you get, I've seen other cities where they do, they're very concerned over who pays what, and especially those of lower income. It's up to you in a, for the future, where you can include with your base so much usage. And, and so I've seen that done many, many times. Uh, you know, you include the first, uh, two thousand gallons, or whatever it is, in, in a base, in a base fee.
Yeah.
I'm not saying to suggest and do that, but as you look in the future and you're concerned about that, that is something you can do.
I think they looked at higher users pay a higher price, and tried to get it that way, if, if you really need that water. Um, but that is another way to protect maybe the, that those is, is, yeah, maybe put a minimum in there, and so then if they don't use over the minimum, their price doesn't go up, you know, something like you're saying.
Correct.
Certain amount.
Just to keep in mind there though, that the base fee may have to be adjusted for that, to cover those costs, I mean, that with every increase or decrease, there's always some balance.
Yeah, you could say, well, we'll increase the higher user instead, and them pay.
The other thing that was discussed back then was ways to, for who can't afford their water bills, some programs for assistance, so.
I know the CAT, uh, CAT, as that Columbia Action Team, will help pay some bills from time to time. Um, Dave, two is, dude, the wells, anything, the water, is there any gonna be help, I mean, is, is it gonna just be place an old well that was out in a new well, or, or any of these gonna help, um, alleviate fees over time, I mean, or?
Well, as you all know, we're, we've got big projects going with the reservoir, the two wells, um, those aren't gonna lower costs, we still have a substantial amount of distribution pipe work that we haven't begun to replace. There's miles and miles and miles of the fifty miles we have that are over fifty years old, they're way overdue of being replaced. We've already got one on the books for this summer, as soon as we know what the costs of the reservoir are, then we'll be looking at doing a pipeline replacement. Get aware of that when that contract is forward, then, one after another, we need to be doing, you know, close to a half a mile to a mile a year to keep our system up, because the life expectancy is only fifty years, so you're replacing this entire city every fifty years. But, but the stuff doesn't last forever, I wish it did, but.
And doing good now will help prevent it from being ridiculously high later, or?
Yeah, or, when, when you get into the infrastructure starts to fail, your water losses are increased, your labor costs are increased, it starts to really be detrimental to overall big pictures. Anyways, thank you all.
Hey, from right six.
Uh, Dave, are you leaving? Oh, okay. I ca- I can do it really quick, um, I just wanted to say thank you really quick for, um, the ITB and the transparent procurement process that you guys did on Maple Street for the sidewalks, and then also, um, for the, uh, wastewater treatment and, um, bidding process as well. Um, it was, uh, nice to see that we were able to choose the lowest bid as well. And I really appreciate you guys keeping the, um, bidding window open, um, longer to ensure that we weren't excluding anybody that just had time constraints putting together a proposal. So, thank you.
Charlotte's doing a great job of helping.
Charlotte's doing a great job of corralling your contracts, I got on the record for you, thanks.
Okay, uh, number six, discussion on Scappy's Municipal Code two-point-two, four-point-zero-two-zero, which reads, "The police force of the city shall consist of a chief of police and all necessary policemen to be appointed and serve as described by the city charter regarding other officers." We had brought this up, kinda, you know, came to our knowledge within the last month or so, that that the code, language, the municipal code there does say, "Police force have a police chief." So after discussion and talking about it, and basically asking Larry to try to come up with something to get us up to this code, um, here tonight, and what have you come up with?
This is, I've got a statement I want to read, which will cover that. All of you are aware that the police department is at a difficult time for many years. We believe it is turning around. Our goal is to set the department up on the right track, and work towards the council goal of having a professional, fully staffed, committee-oriented department. We have worked hard with the police guild to develop a, a contract that's both affordable to the city, and offers wages and benefits adequate to attract top-notch officers. We anticipate proposing a new contract to you before the end of June. We currently have three out of six, three out of eight patrol positions vacant. In fact, a week ago, the city is paying no wages to any individual who is not working. They have one sergeant position open, will be open no later than August first. The city is currently advertising the vacant positions with the hope of having them all filled by the end of two thousand twenty-four. Brian Jensen, the current Public Safety Director, will be appointed as temporary police chief until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. He does a psych evaluation tomorrow, and is expected to be recertified by DPSST for an eighteen-month period within two weeks. The appointment was, appointment will be as a temporary employee. Uh, on his own discretion, he has indicated he will not be accepting medical coverage and other coverage not required by law. This is a savings of approximately two thousand dollars per month over a full-time employee. His contract will include a thirty-day severance clause. This allows the new city manager to make changes before the end of six months, if he's inclined to do so. Before the end of this six-month period, the hope is that we'll be fully staffed with experienced employees, allow a new manager to appoint a new chief, um, hopefully, from perhaps within the department, or if necessary, advertise to hire one from without. That's a program we've laid out now, uh, for the next six months, trying to get the department in a good operating mode.
I appreciate it, I mean, I, I, I think the last six months, we've been doing really well, I feel like we've been going in the right direction. Um, I'm sure it's tough with an interim city manager and an, and an interim chief, to, to try to really make some big strides and big changes, because you, you know, you know you guys aren't gonna be here for a long time, and, um, we're in the middle of a union negotiation. But I think, um, I appreciate that, you know, when we saw this, we, we really wanted to get up within code, and, um, does this then qualify that, I mean, by doing the psych and doing that, you, whether it's an interim police chief, or temporary police chief, or police chief pro temp, it, it qualifies for that position.
Right, he will be a certified officer. Yes.
So I do have some questions. Larry, are you familiar with, um, chapter two fifty-nine of the ORS, two fifty-nine, zero zero eight, zero zero one zero, Minimum Standards for Employment as Law Enforcement Officer, Utilization as a Reserve Officer? There's multiple pages of all the different requirements. And the new requirements under OAR two fifty-nine, zero zero eight, zero zero one five, regarding background investigation that has to be done too?
And that has been completed.
Is it correct that this idea was basically born on last Thursday?
It's the Thursday, probably, yeah.
And you were able to get all the background investigation completed, required under the OAR, within that amount of time?
My understanding that DPSST, that we've talked to them about what they will accept, and they're telling us that if we can do a background, a criminal background, and a, uh, driver's license background, that the R D department does that, they will accept that, for an eighteen-month appointment as a, uh, certified officer.
The background investigation that we're doing complies with the OAR that's, uh, entered.
Now, I will admit, this is not the background check that we're, we talk about when we're hiring a permanent officer, we want to do a lot more to make sure that. Yeah, we're talking about a person who's been working for the city a number of times, and we're trying to cover this period. You know, if we're gonna do background checks, the way that we think you're gonna want them done, or a regular officer, will be quite a bit different.
So I want to be clear that you're saying that OAR two fifty-nine, zero zero eight, zero zero one zero, minimum standards, are all being complied with?
I'm saying the DPSST will accept what we're doing.
And how does that different, deviate from what is in this OAR?
You don't know that.
And my other question is, is why are we going from a ten-day notice to a thirty-day, if how is that within the interest of the city, especially when we're about ready to hire a new city manager who we want to have the flexibility to be able to make decisions within the city? You're extending it to thirty days versus the ten that it is now? And adding severance?
What is, the ten days is, is seven, it's not, no, no, ten-day notice, I'm sorry. Uh, we, uh, we're trying to actually make it is if the new manager comes in, and let's say, and hopefully, first of all, I want him to stop, and I always call him him, because four applicants are guys. Uh, with the idea that we want him to have to stop and think what they're doing. We don't want him to come in and, and do anything quickly or anything like that, so I'm assuming he's gonna take two, three months at least, for that person to become familiar with it, the system. Hopefully, the system is going good. The, the chief would have a six-month contract starting in, in June. So if he's four months through, and, and the man decides to, uh, let him go, yes, then it does call for the severance. Doing it to, to make it so it is, is an easy, clear way to end the contract.
Uh, okay, um, one of the other concerns was, is that Mr. Jensen holds another job that takes him away from the city, so is Brian, Mr. Jensen gonna be here as a full-time employee, employee forty hours a week going forward then? Manage the police department as a, is it an interim police chief?
I'm, I'm using, uh, either way, interim acting, anyway. Whatever, whatever we might title it. Uh, we have not actually worked out the actual schedule yet, doing that in the next couple of weeks.
Is it your expectation that he work forty hours a week?
I'm expecting him to give me the dates that he can't work, and I will adjust accordingly. Be, if he has other commitments that he's already had for the next six months, I want to know about those, and work with him to accomplish those.
And is your understanding that per DPSST, or the OARs in law, that you can actually certify somebody that's a temporary employee?
Yes, contacted DPSST, and, uh, in fact, the city of Sandy is doing it right now as a temporary. They have an eighteenth month, uh, basically a short-duration certification that they can do, which is what we're gonna do, which would not require a medical. Uh, the next PCOD, which is a, a full-time class that I would have to go to, um, if I were to extend beyond that, the next class that she said she could get me signed up for isn't until December.
So there's basically, if I'm understanding correctly, there's basically a waiver of all these requirements, because it's only an eighteen-month assignment, is that?
I don't know, I don't know what it waves or not, that's up to the cabinet, I just asked them what our options were, and they laid these two different options.
Hey, when I had asked you previously if you were willing to be a chief and do what is necessary, you told me no, what changed?
Uh, well, I didn't see a need for it at that time. Um, obviously, somebody had dug through the, uh, city code and found that we weren't in compliance, and of course, I want to do whatever I can to help out, you know, the folks at this department, and the citizens, and you guys. And, uh, that's what I need to do, then I'm willing to do it.
And possibly at that time, you hadn't talked to DPSD, so you didn't know what the minimum requirement would be.
We hadn't spoken to them at all, no.
Didn't know, they maybe had an eighteen-month thing that, this, oh, this is what it takes. And I think too, I, I, I'm trying to not speak for you, but if there was a ten-day, and now it's a, it's a thirty-day, but you've, you've kind of sacrificed a little by doing this, by going back, you know, getting certified, and you want some security kind of going forward, um, and I think it gives, um, yeah, I'm just trying to understand, and I, it kinda, it makes sense.
Can I ask a question, so will you be picking up patrol shifts as well alongside the officers?
I will have the ability to.
Will we be having a working chief?
I don't think it would be in the best interest of the city to spend a couple thousand dollars to outfit me, I'm only gonna be here till end of the year. It's already costing the city, you know, money for my psych and all of that, so I'm trying to save money as much as possible. Um, if there is a need for it, an operational need for it, then I will have the ability to do that.
Going forward though, you will be able to train, hopefully, someone within our department and work with, um, tenant and-
Yes, yes. I'm doing that in the capacity that I am serving now.
I mean, our concern was, we had talked about lieutenant going as a potential interim, and we, we said, you know, we don't have a lot of officers, and so I think by keeping you on, our numbers stay the same, and as we hire more, we get another sergeant in, it will give more time for lieutenant to get off the street and train, or learn what it takes to be that. And it, but again, this, to me, this is up to the city manager and the next city manager, so, um, sounds like it's setting us up for opportunities and options. Kind of what this did, with your recommendation months ago, twice to bring in, you know, uh, Brian Jensen, because we, you recommended him as, you know, a person that could really help and be a good part of this department, and I think he has, everything that I've seen, um, has done that. Um, this, obviously, it's not a perfect necessarily, um, clean, but I think it's a good opportunity to move forward and give the new city manager some security, some, you know, some able police department, at least for the next six months going forward.
Well, if we desire, uh, hope that lieutenant be eligible to advance, and the new manager would agree with that. Concern there right now is this, there's nobody in the department with the experience, we're losing, uh, Officer Stevenson, Sergeant, uh, who's on workers' company, he's the one that's leaving the first of August. Uh, he probably had the most experience of all anybody, as far as someone who could help out a lieutenant. Now, we're, we're losing him, we, we knew his company, we knew, but we finally got a, a flat date out of him, so we know how to plan. Uh, and our goal is to, to hire sergeant. If, if we had two applicants, I would really suggest we hire two, with, with the hope that they would compete and be selected to be lieutenant, that would be ideal. Depending on who comes along.
Hopefully with field training, field training-type abilities.
Correct.
Then lieutenant wouldn't have to be-
Again, that's gonna be the, the new manager's, uh, call, but, uh, that, that would be the desire.
Hey, you know, my, my concern remains that, um, the staffing was a big issue. And, I mean, essentially what you're doing, what I'm hearing, is just giving them a title, but our problem still remains the same, really, and that is that we still don't have a sworn position as sworn chief during the daytime to, uh, be able to cover the officer on duty, or even work as the on-duty officer if needed, or be able to respond to major emergencies, so my preference would be that, uh, he does become certified in uniform, and be able to respond to calls, if this is what your plan is. So my preference would be that uh he does become certified in uniform and be able to respond to calls if this is what your plan is.
Don't know that.
So how is this, okay, so. How is it in the best interest of the city then? Not have a uniformed police chief that can respond to calls? Cause that's why we're all here, for the best interest of the city and the citizens.
I could, I I think it is in the best interest of the city to have a uniform. I just think right now. Don't have that option available to us, best functioning of the police department. Eventually, I I absolutely, I think that is the goal that we we all want. But right now, we are in, you know, code red of of critical staffing, we're doing the best we can to keep our. You know, heads above water over there. And uh, this is the best option that I see, Lieutenant Flewellen, by his own admission. Uh, doesn't feel that he's ready to take the position of police chief, and I think if we force him into that, I think ultimately he'll fail. And I I think that he is a good candidate for the future, no doubt about it. And I think if we can set him up for success, I think he would be there for a long time. What I would hate to do, and I would hate to see happen, is is put someone in that position. Take it because of course they're want to do the best they can, and ultimately fail. And and I think that, uh, given a good six more months, um, isn't that long in the big scheme of things. I think that it would benefit him immensely. Um, the the department's going to be in a better spot just because the staffing is going to improve. We are, I came in here, we are arguably at the very bottom, low as we can go, we're rising up. It's gonna take some time. That department needs stability in its leadership, I think everyone can agree on that, I know the staff surely does, I've spoke to every single one of them. Um, about my uh desire to stay for an additional six months to help out, and it was, they were all behind that a hundred percent. So I I I think that we're we're rising up, and I think right now, again. Uh, I will be certified, if I need to go out and and do something, then then I'll do that, if the need is there. Um, I haven't really seen the need so far from my seat. Um, even though I couldn't go out there, I have gone out and helped with the training of one of our officers and and rode with him. Uh, so I uh, yeah, if 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 he comes up and as far as big. Uh, emergency things, I've already responded to uh the murder, the double murder that we had, it came out, it got called out in the middle of the night for that. So I am still responding to these uh big events, which is what you would expect of a police chief or an interim public safety director, I believe. I think that this is, I think the city is going to benefit in the sense that we are providing stability at that police department. And uh, we are, we are improving.
How close are you getting to any uh hiring that you can feel? I mean, are you getting closer?
We have an interview, we have interviews Thursday.
Or dinner officer. Um, again, the next city manager. Will have a decision for the next six months, and and dependent on how it goes and how it changes and. Where we are, you know, it's, they can make a change if they feel need and. Um, but going forward, I think this gives some. It meets our code, it gets up to code, which was, I think, our number one concern. Um, I like the ability, if if lieutenant is that person, that you're someone there to help work with them. Is there a way on these hiring that he can be part of the hiring process?
One hundred percent. In fact, he told me today that he wasn't going to sit down at the interviews on Thursday that I was and said, no. It's your job, so he's he's taking a very big role, I mean, this is. Future of his department, his in being, you know, an administrator in the department, I mean, I'm. I want him to be very involved in in the hiring.
That's right, I I think for, just to echo what Brian was saying, there's, there's a lot of reasons this makes sense, so I support this. And I, we do need continuity leadership right now, and it's arguably the police department's in a better place. And however many years, um, six months goes by fast. Sense, I support it.
So I have a question, so how, one of the things that I kept hearing was some of the laterals. In the area weren't applying because they wanted to know who the chief was going to be long term. So how, what are we going to do about that aspect and being able to recruit qualified lateral applicants? Because, I mean, I would understand, I I would, I wouldn't want to go work for a department, especially in the, how competitive department recruiting is right now. They want to know who they're, they want to know who they're going to be working for. I know, but we're trying to fill our positions now, and laterals aren't applying because they don't know who the police chief's going to be.
Yeah, but if we're looking for a sergeant in the next three months, if we're looking for a sergeant and they want to know. And yes, there's no guarantee if we say that our idea is lieutenant, but. Things can change and there's no guarantee, I don't think you can guarantee a lateral that a certain thing's going to happen down the road. But. You're going to miss out on opportunities possibly, but I think maybe with the stability and a new contract, maybe there's other op, new opportunities that we get. Um, wouldn't have seen otherwise.
Oh, and I would.
I think the most important thing is our department is is running well, efficient. Um, in the right direction.
And I would hope we're going to have a full-time police chief here, forty hours a week. For paying the money for it.
Well, I have a question, follow-up questions under that, how mu- how many hours are you working?
Right now?
Yeah.
On average. We're between forty to forty-five hours a week, if I'm available. Um, I'm on call constantly, I am receiving phone calls at night and on my weekend and.
You are working hours.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I appreciate it, I mean, months, not months, but a month ago when we had mentioned this, and you know, it's. Appreciate you looking at this and stepping up and wanting to still be here and wanting to run the department and. Feel that you have something to offer and willing to do this, I, it may not be a lot of work, but do it, I'm sure. Um, I appreciate that.
Can I clarify, just because I think there are a few questions that have been around there, so you. Even if we're not outfitting you, you would be able to respond. Let's say, as a backup, you'll be armed, respond, backup officers if needed.
Yes.
There's no, there's no reason you can't do that.
Would be no reason I would not be able to do that, that's correct.
Okay.
And I too, every month, things are changing, we're getting, you know, new people, they're getting more trained, they're getting out there, I think. Keep going in the right direction. I can update, maybe every month then just update where we are like we've been doing and. Anything else? Hey, thank you, guys, uh, moving on, number seven, I just threw this in there because we did a last year discussion of canceling the July first meeting.
I saw move.
I was gonna say, it's completely up to you, I don't want you to think this is me. Um, right now, the only thing really on the pocket is uh urban renewal applications. That we can move those to July fifteenth without an issue.
I think you had to said hello, like.
Um, I guess what I I like about canceling is you can always add it back, a lot easier than canceling it at a later time.
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, do I have a motion then?
Motion to cancel July first meeting, council meeting.
Um, any second.
Second.
The only discussion I'd have is, is if there's something with a new city manager that really needs to be done, we'll revisit it. It could, it could even be the week before then, you know, something, a special meeting. But um, okay, thank you, um, for discussion. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Announcements, um, are within our own. Calendar first?
Yes.
Hey, calendar, we are on June third, uh, farmer's market every Saturday in June nine to two. Big one this weekend, ten to six, summer festival, uh, birth fun festival. Um, June thirteenth, planning commission, seven P M. And seventeenth, uh, urban renewal agency, got just to approve the budget, believe.
There'll be some other items.
Council meeting at seven P M, city office closed on June nineteenth, fifteen. Uh, right now, it's June twentieth, E D C meeting at noon, Parks and Rec at six P M. Hey, interim city manager, Larry Lima.
I I believe that you've received, I hope you have, the 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 questions for the interviews, for the.
Yes, yes.
Now, do you, if you have any questions you want to ask on that, or change those.
Yes.
Okay.
I will email them tomorrow.
Okay, please do, I want to get those together, you know, and if you got, anybody else have others? Uh, I'm probably going to add one just about urban renewal. Nothing in there about, you know, any experience with urban renewal. Uh, so we'll have those set to go.
Those are for the stakeholders as well, so if there's anything you think they should ask, it's not on there.
I noticed like the stakeholder one had the question about a police chief. I think I saw that on the stakeholder and I was like, that's weird, that should actually be moved to council. Want to hear that question.
Marissa, I don't know if you saw, Lieutenant Flewellen is going to be one of the.
Stakeholders.
Holders.
Oh, that's good. Oh, is that?
So I'll just make sure he's not on that one.
Oh, no, no, okay, we'll see, I.
I hadn't had, I just let you know, we did put him on your original list.
Yeah.
Saw, but I just remembered that. There's uh Kevin Turner's out of town and.
Then there we go. But I still have other questions I want to have added.
Send those to me.
I will.
Uh, that and then uh. I realize you just canceled the July first meeting, I. Uh, but to me, that's right, we may have to have some meetings, special meetings. Um, well, we have the union contract, we're still working on it. Uh, we've got some flaw, we've got some things to work out. But we're working on that yet, want to get that to you before then, whether we can arrange that with some other meetings, we'll try. Just want to forewarn you that towards the end of the month, we may try to have a special meeting or something.
Okay, rather do that.
Look, last week of June, potentially, yeah.
It'll be your farewell gift.
And that's all I got.
Yeah. Want me to read it?
Just basically, given their rate increase, their rates. There's not much.
Yeah, much time to get it into the meeting this week, but. Waste management has sent uh their annual rate increase notification, we'll probably see it in the next month. Have to vote for it at all. Under numbers.
That's.
Basically, they're increasing their rates, uh, five point four, six, nine percent.
Which I don't believe waste management asked for a rate increase last year, don't believe, no.
You're correct, they're they're stating, I'm I, uh, the last rate increase went went into effect on July first, twenty twenty-three.
I do remember them in there, and it was based on the. Fees that they needed to, their fees went up to dump their garbage.
And and this is not one we have influence on. They're informing us, they're doing. Asking us.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the pass through. We have the option to go out to bid to find another management company to service our city, so there's that. On the record.
Um, hey, thank you. Thank you, Director Brian Jensen.
Uh, well. I have the topic tonight, so I can discover that. Uh, I just wanted to say again, we have interviews this Thursday, uh, hopefully, we can get uh somebody. Uh, also, we started a uh, I I mentioned a couple uh months ago, maybe it was last month. Um, about how the uh. Communication has increased between the police departments, uh, the local municipalities and the sheriff's offices, we've all been getting together. Uh, we just got a, I just got, received an email from uh Sheriff Pixley today. We're actually going to start up the uh, I guess years ago, they used to do, I know we did it for Clackamas, have a chief's meeting once a month. For quarterly or whatever it is, uh, that we're starting that back up. And we're going to have our first uh meeting, and that came out of the meeting that we had with uh Saint Helens and uh, uh, the sheriff. A while ago, but that that's coming up at the end of the month, so that would be good, just to get that communication going. Uh, the training that I was talking about, how we're going to start doing, we wanted to get like a county-wide training. Uh, going and and all that is is going full-fledged ahead, um, Lieutenant Flewellen kind of taking the lead on that. As far as setting that up, um, working with uh, you know, different trainers from different agencies in the county. So, again, it's, it's a really good thing for the law enforcement community, that we're starting to work together, start to communicate better. Um, the the troops are already communicating, it's just good that the admins are now starting to talk with one another and and work things out. Uh, other than that, that's about all I got, it was nice to hear from uh Betsy. Uh, about the good work that our guys are doing, which is, I think is uh, you know. Morale is increasing, I think people get out in a better mood, they're just happier, and I think that, I mean, I know I'm seeing that from where I'm at. I don't think I'm looking at it through rose-colored glasses, I think it's genuine, and that's kind of validation of that, that they're out there. Doing good work and being nice and polite and empathetic and all the things that we want our officers to be while they're doing it, so I'm. It was nice to hear that, that's about all I have, do you have any questions for me or concerns?
No, but I do like, I mean, we put out things on our our Facebook page, and it's, all the comments are positive, always way to go, good job, you know, the. You see all the other ones, whether it's water, and then they complain about water or something, it. It they've all been positive, so I really appreciate that. Um, not a concern, but there is quite a bit of traffic over at the lodge. So I just, um, the new food cart.
Oh, yeah.
Just, you know, if any, you know, heads up there, um, I noticed they've been parking on the grass and one thing, I hope and they got approval to do that, I'm sure they did.
They. Working on that. No, no, they, they uh, there was a bunch of, I mean, it's like, a lot of correspondents going back, of course, bringing them and C D C. And they're getting that worked out, at least on a temporary basis.
Yeah, I saw their sign went up today and be, just be safe, you know, it. There are why five minutes to cross on our electric bike, because there's cars just one after the other after the other, and um, yeah, just be careful there.
Yeah, I have a good idea, I remember now when we was talking about the contract for the fees that we put in there, if they live in town, they get two hundred bucks. Uh, whether that adds up too much, we don't know, I would really like to encourage you, with the new city manager, to insist. Live in town, in the city limits. And uh, and maybe give them uh six months to do so, doesn't mean you have to buy. They they, I would insist they live within the city.
New city manager? Buy a house, own a house.
Well, that's, that'd be the hope, within six months, I would say they they must reside within the city.
Anything else? Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, um, just real quick, want to congratulate the seniors, uh, graduation was on June first, so congratulations to the class of twenty-four. Um, also, I want to uh thank Carol and Finance, as well as the team putting together our newsletter. Uh, she's implementing the different um budget sections. To try to help people just kind of understand how our budgets work and what the different funds are. So general uh fund went out this last time, uh, so look, look out for those, hopefully, the community finds those helpful.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Jacobs.
Um, the summer festival is this Saturday, and I think we're all going to be there in some form or capacity. Uh, so that'll be great to be there. Yes, it's going to be warm, it's going to actually be summer. Excited. Um. Just uh overview for this group here, uh, as the liaison for the Parks Committee. Uh, our next session, we're going to be looking at ranking. Sort of the opportunities we have in front of us to get after as a committee. Um, and and really trying to look at it through the lens of, um, what are some of the low-cost but sort of high-value? Things we can get after that will help improve our parks. Um, there's a lot of conversation about top, or about disc golf and pickleball. Um, so some exciting things, um, I hope in the next few months we'll be able to bring forward to you and. Hopefully move on. And um. Yeah, the food cart pods are amazing, it's a game changer for our community, do echo. A mayor in terms of like traffic. I think it'll take us a little time to work through it, but the food cart pods is like a game changer for us in this community, it's really nice to have so many. Uh, different choices now in in the scene, and they're really solid. Really great. Yeah, other than that, great week.
Thank you, Counselor LePrenz.
I just wanted to thank our our great staff, there's so much going on, um. Running the city, and I've always felt very well-informed, and all the staff, whenever I have a question. Reach out, they really, they get back to me quickly and answer everything, so um, this work, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Holmes.
Yeah, I will also congratulate all the twenty twenty-four grads, my son was one of them, and having the police uh help with traffic control was essential. It could have been a nightmare, um, but no, I, it struck me kind of listening to the commencement, um, you know, our school district really does a good job. This class in particular, I think, has really excelled in a lot of areas, getting statewide recognition, um, and, you know, I think it just speaks to. Um, kind of, you know, what the school district brings to this community. I think uh our schools really are one of our greatest assets, so I think. I think uh our schools really are one of our greatest assets. So I thank them. Yes, uh adventure fest or no, sorry. Outdoor Fest. We will have a tent uh for the city and I've got a spot left if anyone would like to sign up. And we can certainly double up, but I want to thank Dave and Susan and Lori for helping to quickly assemble some things. That I think will make it a nice booth and have some good information about budgets and all sorts of water resource uh conservation and. And all sorts of good information for people. So I thank you all for helping out with that as well. We're to see you Saturday.
Thank you.
Guys said it all already, but um excited about June eighth, yes, and I think we should as a council kind of make that. Every event. Um, I think people would love to see us as a group outside of this uh recording chambers. Um. I would like to thank you for your proposed um idea, Larry, and and all the work that's been put by all of your, all your team. Thank you. Um, I also want to mention the lodge. I have gone a couple of times and. I haven't, I'm trying to taste everything. They've, it's all been excellent, by the way. Excellent food. I do um. Uh, recommend to respect the, they they put out the announcement, respect their neighbors, pick up your trash. Um, if we want to keep it a, you know, a place to go to, we should, we should also be respectful. To the the business and the businesses around. So um, yes, there's no parking, but we knew that. You know, and it's not, it's not a very far walk, so. Um, thank you. Oh, and I will be gone next.
Be there June eleventh for the social.
Yes.
Get us your information and then the twelfth.
I am out.
I'm not sure how that works on the twelfth yet. If we come out of the next session, make decisions or ask to offer, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Uh, council president Noah.
Um, I had previously asked about um getting information about city maybe having a booth at the fair. Um. Just following up on that. I don't know if Isaac said time to look into that.
The county fair?
Yeah. Um, and also congratulations to the graduates. That's all I have. Thank you.
Say, let's see how it goes Saturday and how our booth goes and see if we, I mean, I I'd like to do something there, but we could. Hear how it goes, decide what we want to put in it. Um, when it might be, maybe it's not all two or three days at the fair. Maybe we add it one of the days. Um, but yeah, uh, thank you. I really do want to thank J J. She's doing an amazing work on this outdoor fun festival. Jeff Weiss at the library, um, the outreach, the seeing it on. The internet, seeing it on the signs. I mean, they're really trying hard and so it's going to be interesting to see. It's not the big adventure fest that we've seen. But it hopefully will really be a good um event for what it's supposed to do for um. Grow on it next year. Is the police, has she talked? Have you guys set up something that'd be around, obviously?
Yes, we'll be there.
Um. Understand CP, uh, I, two things, though. Thank you to the congratulations to Scappy's baseball team. They did win back to back state title Saturday night. I guess I just read that's their sixth title, second most ever in the state. Um, so congratulate to them and all the graduates. Um, let's see, um, thank you today for giving the tour on the interview day. Appreciate that. For your feedback. Um. Two things I wanted to bring up. We had talked about interim city manager position, roles and responsibilities. And I did the research that I said I would and looked up a lot of cities. Um, and a handful of them had in their charter. Some of them, I couldn't really find anything in their. Code or rules, but most of them said, you know, when city manager absent, they can appoint a city manager pro temp who has the power. All the powers except that point or remove personnel only with approval of council and no person may be manager pro temp. More than six consecutive months. Um, that was seaside, uh Newburgh basically said the same thing. Um, council must fill the office by appointment as soon as practical. And um when temporary, can only appoint or remove employees only with council improvement, approval. Same with Ashland. So it's something um I'll ask if you guys are interested as we look at our council rules. Hopefully, we won't have an interim anytime during our cycle, but to set up the next, next one. Um, to be able to have them come in with some ideas of their role and responsibility to help them better succeed if we want to discuss that. Anything in our charter has to be done through a vote. If it's council rules, um, can do it through resolution. Coordinates. Um, the other thing I had talked about, um, you guys have all brought this up over time, our attorney fees. And as we get into the new uh city manager, it's something that we would like to look at again. Um, we all went from Peter Watts, who was once a month fee for that side of it, and you can use them all you want to now everything from an email cost. And so we, I would like to get some direction from all of us coming together of what we think. Our role and responsibility is when it comes to using the attorneys. Larry, his city manager has has really put some cuts and done a good job with staff. Trying to get things to go through him and 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 before it would go out. And it's only our, it's only fair that we follow the same kind of guidelines. And and are responsible to that. So as we get in, I'd like to maybe look at that. We brought up council rules and. Um, a couple of times, but I would like to put that on there if there's a consensus. Um, because I've looked at our attorney bills and there's some months it's up there and some months it's not. And that is an area that we can actually help control. Talking fiscal responsibility, I think we're as responsible as everyone else. I would like to look at that as well. Um, with nothing else, media interviewer.
If you bring this back to you.